...second, City Council. First thing is we need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And then we have a consent agenda for the minutes, September 4th and September 11th.
Jennifer, I had sent an email to Colleen asking her to include some other information. Do you know, did that get included?
I have some information on that. What I directed Colleen to do is that if you or anybody else wants to send some information to have included, that the clerk does the minutes and then you folks can modify the minutes. But don't think that, I don't want to get into a situation where one person sends in additional information and then another person, you know, didn't get the same opportunity. So, in my mind, the minutes are what they are, is provided by the recorder. And then individuals can say, I want to, you know, modify the minutes based on this or to, you know, for whatever reason. Because I think everybody needs to hear that if the minutes are going to be modified.
Whatever, what I had asked was, when we were talking about the sunsetting of the five-year lodging, I had asked that my comments would be included, not that, I didn't want to add anything, I just wanted my comments to be included because when I read the minutes, I had, it gave the impression that there had been no argument against the sunsetting. It sounded, you know, from the minutes that it was a done deal and there was no, and everybody was in favor of it.
Uh huh.
And I didn't feel that that was the case. That wasn't, how, I left the meeting feeling that, you know, that that was the case.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to have something included to, to show the arguments that were against it. I didn't want to add anything, just something included that was actually said during the meeting.
Right, and that's totally appropriate, but I feel that the place to make the changes to the minutes that were done by the recorder is here. So, I think that's where that should be brought up.
Okay.
So, everybody can hear that, you know, that discussion. And maybe there's someone that wants something else included too, I don't know.
Okay.
But, that's, that was my reasoning. If the council wants to change that particular procedure, I'm happy to do so, but I just think that, again, the recorder does minutes, y'all can modify them and approve them, but...
The recorder's quite open to receiving typo corrections.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
And incorporate those at the top.
Right, right.
With the public.
Yeah. But, George, I agree, what you're talking about should be in there. I'm, it probably should have been, but again, once they're done, I think that you all need to have the discussion about any changes to those.
What you could do is table it, and table the meeting minutes specific, and then present your, what you've said properly.
And George, if you don't, if you don't have the specific comments, if we're going to table it, we can provide you with the verbatim of what was said during that time for that discussion.
And that's what I'd like included, so if nobody objects to my comments at that time from the meeting, I would, you know, rather than me restate those, you know, they're in the minutes, you know, they're, they're in the note, or the...
Recording.
Yeah, so it's already there. So, if no one objects to including that, then, you know, I would ask that we go forward with the inclusion of the arguments that I made for not sunsetting the five-year plan.
Sure. And that's how I re-resolve it.
Would you like to make a motion that includes that?
Sure.
Yeah, I move that we approve the minutes with the addition of the comments made by myself in regards to why I would not like to see the sunsetting of the five-year rentals.
I'll second that.
Okay. Jennifer, I think we should do a roll call on this one. All right.
Council President Bennett?
Yes.
Council Dillard?
Aye.
Council Olbey?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Staley?
Yes.
Okay. And that, okay, nevermind. The public comment phase, for those folks who would like to state something. Jim, we're going to save your comments on the contract specifically for that item. Okay? Anybody else? Kevin?
Kevin Ridgeway, three, five, two, seven, South Hemlock. I noticed that there was an item on the agenda tonight concerning public art, and I thought it might be appropriate to update you on the status of the Oregon Coast Public Art Trail, which I'm developing for the Oregon Coast Visitors Association. It's been a lot longer than I anticipated, but we're getting to the stage now where we'll have an inventory completed later this month, and it will be included in the Tourism Oregon Information System, and then it will be brought out in January into a destination marketing tactics. The media attention to this project has been absolutely incredible, and from Seattle to Arizona to locally. And just last week, we actually had the photographer for VIA Magazine covering the coast to, for an article that will be in the January, February issue of VIA, and actually the art trail will have the front cover of that particular issue. And of course, I live here, so Cannon Beach will be featured in that article, hopefully prominently, and maybe the front cover. I don't have control over that, but we'll, we'll try and make that happen. So, it's, so that when I see an article on a subject that you're looking to support a Beachville public art project, obviously, I'm going to encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Please, yep.
Hi, I'm Sandy Fitzpatrick, and I'm using my microphone because I know there's at least three of us in here with hearing aids.
Aye.
So, try to use your microphones tonight if you can. I'm here about the rabbits. I wasn't able to make last month's meeting. You guys have probably seen me on the news because I've become the neighborhood spokesman, not willingly. I know you guys were told that you'd discuss it. I don't see anything on the agenda about the rabbits. We can't keep pushing this underneath the rug like we've been doing. Action needs to happen. These are feral rabbits. If you've driven down through Tolavana, they're horrible. We drove Friday night from our house, we drove one block down Pacific, one block up Umpqua, and then headed toward Midtown. We counted seventy-four rabbits just in the fronts where we could see them. We didn't go in any backyards. The holes that they're digging in our yard, we stepped in, twisted our ankles. The rabbit pellets that are left in our yards are unbelievable, and I can't grow any plants. You guys are so into plants, they're destroying it. They're, they're eating the bark around my trees. My grandson tried to eat a pellet, Fourth of July. It's an issue, okay? Do you guys allow pets? Do you allow rabbits or chickens in cages in Cannon Beach? Probably not. This is what it's become, it's become everybody's pets. They're feeding them, some people are cutting holes in fences so they can live underneath their decks. This has become pets. Pets in this town have to be on a leash. These are pets. They're, they're feral pets. What if I brought down a bunch of chickens, let them go, but I fed them, cut a hole in the cage so I could keep them? What if I did this for dogs, let dogs go? They're not my dog, but I can feed it, I can pet it, I can play with it. We've got a problem, and it's time that we do something about it. This is a really big health issue. I was just in Africa. I got the bacteria from the water that was feces in the water. This town has all our storm drains that run off of yards. Our storm drains come from low points in the yards that are full of feces. It runs through the storm drains, runs down, big storm drain right at the bottom of what Tolavana's referring as Bunny Hill. That's where they have their dogs go to bathroom, that's where the rabbits are going, rains that runs into the storm drains, goes right out onto the beach, and the kids are playing in it. I tell parents not to have their kids playing in it because not only does it have that, which we have a big EKOLI issue here, didn't we just have a shutdown of the beach in end of August? That's one of our problems, I mean, besides the birds and everything else. So, it's time that we really, really address this and not put it underneath. If we have to, maybe we need to go to the state and talk to the Health Department about this. This is as bad as rats. And I think I've covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comment?
Mike Dwyer, one, seven, five, West Coos. And I was just going to reiterate the same comment. I live on Coos Street, from Coos Street, Pacific, Umpqua, before I even turned on to Hemlock today, I counted twenty-one, and I didn't even bother slowing down. By the time I got to Fresh Foods, it was thirty-six. Just not even looking, just, they're right there. Another ten, twenty coming up the hill toward, before I hit the S-curves. There used to be, back in, when we first moved down back in 'oh-six, there used to be a few rabbits just before you got to the S-curves, just the other side of the S-curves, just south of the S-curves. Now, there's, like you said, there's, there's probably a hundred. Not counting the new little babies I saw on my neighbor, my brother-in-law's lot, I didn't count those guys. So, there's probably a hundred, if not more, rabbits easily in the, in the neighborhood. I don't know what the proper approach is. If you look at, I very quickly looked at Klatzau County Animal Control, of course, they're not dealing with rabbits. I don't think they deal with anything other than dogs and cats or something like that. But, as far as their website's concerned, but we have to figure out an approach and how to get rid of them. And anything that we can do to alleviate this problem would be helpful.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Michael Orth, and I'm here to talk about the bunny situation also.
Michael, before you get started, I need your address.
Two, three, five, West Sayusla.
Thank you.
Right next to Bunny Hill, I'm sure all of you probably know where that is. As it turns out, they even have their own Facebook page, which was kind of interesting. I wasn't aware of that, but, some facts. So, I called the Oregon Humane Society and talked to some people there to see if maybe they had some kind of a solution. They'd run into this scenario before with an overpopulation of rabbits or bunnies, and they really didn't have a solution. I've talked to a couple rabbit advocates and rabbit adoption people, there's actually people that do that, and none of them really had a solution for an overpopulation of bunnies. Their issue is people are trying to get rid of bunnies, giving them to them because they don't want them as pets anymore, and there's no room for bunnies at these adoption agencies. But, some facts that were surprising to me anyway was, and this was from the Oregon Humane Society, was that a female rabbit gives birth every thirty days, and there can be nine to ten babies in a litter. And then every bunny will produce up to a hundred pellets a day. So, you start kind of doing the math, and it gets a little bit scary. I assume some of you or all of you have been down into our area and probably have witnessed or seen the abundant, the abundant bunnies, so I, hopefully you realize that, you know, we're not making this up or we're making a bigger deal out of something that really isn't an issue. Two or three bunnies were cute way back when, but it's, it's become an issue, just from the destructive aspect of the bunnies, from the fact, but mainly for the safety and health with the, with the rabbit pellets. If I had, I have grandkids, they're a little bit older now, but when they were infants, anybody that's had kids, you set them down on the ground, and what do they do? They're picking up things and putting things in their mouth, right? So, obviously, you can't set an infant in your yard when there's lots of rabbit pellets there. So, it really has become an issue. I'd just like to reiterate, you know, what Sandy said, she's kind of taken the position of being a point person by default, and I know there's some individuals down here that think the bunnies are cute, and, you know, bunnies are cute, they are. But, there's no natural predators, and there's an unlimited food supply with the tourists and some of the locals that continue to feed the bunnies. So, the problem's not going to go away on its own, and so, you know, we're looking for, I guess, some help from the City Council as to what can be done, what's the solution to this problem. Hopefully, the City Council will, will take this up, this problem up, and, and try and come up with a resolution, but, but that's, you know, kind of, I guess, what we're looking for is some direction from the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I know. Just checking, last call. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll, the City Council talks about our comments at our good, good either order of time at the end of the meeting, so. Next item is a proclamation that I can't read. Okay. Proclamation, Jason, do you want to introduce this? Do you want to introduce this one, this proclamation?
Sure. So, each year in October, I know that most of the city councils are going through the same process, adopting the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Each year, each day, we have lots of different domestic violence assaults throughout the country, and that's no different here in Klatzau County and Cannon Beach. So, the biggest thing we ask is that people, I think the slogan a few years ago was, you see it, report it, and helping getting that out, but also joining all the victims and supporting them. They respond to thousands of crises each year. They do have a shelter now that provides beds, bed nights for women and children. The calls concern domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and other issues. They provide services to all, both men and women, as well as teenagers and children. Murders, murder suicides, and suicides-related domestic violence continue to fill the news. Too many Oregonians have died in situations connected with domestic violence. The victims include, as I said, women, men, and children communities across the state.
Okay. So, I need a motion to adopt the proclamation for domestic violence.
I'll make a motion to adopt proclamation number eighteen dash ten, for the purpose of proclaiming the month of October twenty eighteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I second the motion.
Okay. Jennifer?
Council Olbey?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vetter?
Aye.
Mayor Staley?
Yes. Okay, bear with me, I'm going to read this cold. Proclamation number ten, eighteen, ten. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and financial control and/or abuse. And whereas preventing domestic violence is not only possible, but is in our collective responsibility, and preparation requires significant changes to our social norms regarding gender roles, strength, sexuality, relationships, and the normalization of violence. And whereas in the United States, each year nearly four million women experience physical assaults and rapes because of their partners, men are victims of nearly three million physical assaults, and more than three million children witness domestic violence in their homes. And whereas every nine seconds in the US, a woman is assaulted or beaten, and every day in the US, more than three women and one man are murdered by their intimate partners. Whereas the harbor, state, federal, and nonprofit organizations working in the partnership with the City of Cannon Beach Police Department, and those in the medical profession have taken concrete steps to address domestic violence, and through their combined efforts provide quick response, safe haven, and recovery services. And whereas tragic suffering is a result of domestic violence, we urge those who are abused to get immediate help from one or more of the many services available in the county. Residents of the City of Cannon Beach are encouraged to become educated about domestic violence, support those working to end domestic violence, and to reach out to survivors of domestic violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common counsel of the City of Cannon Beach hereby adopts that October eighteenth to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, consideration of Fredrickson, Frederickson's water bill appeal. Karen?
We have number three.
Number three? Sorry, sorry, we've got an appointment to go through first. I missed it. We have a ballot for nobody on the Emergency Preparedness Committee still, but we have one name for Parks and Community Services. Jelaine Sorensen is a renew. Is Jelaine here?
Jelaine was unable to attend tonight's meeting due to her prior...
Oh, we missed a long speech. Oh, we're voting, okay.
While those are being tallied, I can't, I can't remember anymore how many months now we've had zero people apply to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. It seems that we need to do some kind of a study to figure out what we need to do to turn that around. Is, is it because of the reputation of the committee? Is there, is there something about that committee that nobody is willing to serve on? Maybe we need to change the, the definition or the function of the committee to interest in people, but that committee cannot even meet, to my knowledge, because they don't have a quorum to even have a meeting, so we have, we've got nothing now. We need to see if we can't make something out of nothing.
I guess I would think we're in the process trying to hire a emergency preparedness director, director of emergency services, and when we get that person on board, it would be very good for a meeting with that person and the council to give them time to get on board.
Right.
And understand really what's going on here, and then seek a recommendation from the director of emergency preparedness, and then decide what we need to do with this committee.
Where's that at, at this point, as far as that hire?
Chief, myself, and Colleen are getting together probably later this week to review the applications. I think we've got fourteen or fifteen applications, but, George, to your point, there really hasn't been a lot of activity in anticipation of this person coming on. I, today I had a call from the county EOC, they want to start working with the managers. We want to go ahead and start looking at the, the issues that we think are here. I think once that starts, the e-prep will become a lot more active, so I think that the fact that there really isn't anything to do new might be impacting the ability to attract applicants. So, I think you'll see a change in that in the next month or two.
Okay. Jennifer, where, where we at?
We need a motion.
We need? Did she, uh, you need to count the ballots?
Was she appointed?
Oh, I'm next. So, there was a unanimous by votes for Jelaine.
Okay, now we need a motion.
I move we appoint Jelaine Sorensen to the Parks and Community Services Committee.
I'll second it. Jennifer?
Council Vetter?
Aye.
Council Olbey?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Staley?
Yes. And now, consideration for Fredrickson's water bill appeal. Karen?
After the Public Works Committee reviewed the application for billing waiver by Mr. Frederickson at their August twenty-first meeting, they felt that the charges were accurate, and they recommended that we deny the request for relief. This relief concerns a tenant that Mr. Frederickson has living in his property, the tenant fell behind on the bill. And a bill was sent out to both he and the tenant on June thirteenth. So, they were both notified, copied that bill, it was in the packet, put the date on it. And the letter stated that if the payment was not made by June twenty-first, there'd be a fifty-dollar door hanger charge on June twenty-second, because nine days later, the payment had not been received, so the door hanger was placed, and then a counter charged the fifty dollars. Door hanger states that if the payment's not made by five o'clock on June twenty-sixth, services will be discounted. Past due amount was received on June twenty-fifth. Based on the information above, and that was in part being correct, the Public Works can recommend that council deny the agreement.
What, what is our policy on the notice time before a hanger is hung?
Say again, George.
What, what is our policy on the amount of time that we get someone to respond to, to that notice that was received on the twenty, or on the thirteenth?
Well, in this situation, it was, the bill was sent out on June thirteenth, past due notice saying that they were already delinquent, and they, and the letter gave on until June twenty-first.
But what is our policy? Is that, do we have a policy on, on how long?
No policy.
And what is that?
I think, I think it's ten days. Once...
Ten, ten days?
There's, there's a series, I think there's like four or five different steps where people are notified, but I think maybe the fourth is we let you know, or there's a point that it's a door hanger, and if you don't pay in ten days, then your water would be turned off, but it's probably at least a month or more before, from the time that we're aware, till the time that the water's turned off.
Did the property owner who lives in Tennessee get the bill at the same time as the tenant? I mean, the water, the regularly water bill?
No, I don't know, Jennifer, you're, you're familiar, when the bill goes out, does it just go to the tenant or does it go to the owner as well?
The regular monthly bill just goes to the tenant.
Okay.
For the tenant agreement, but once they get past due, both the owner and the tenant receive that past due notice that says if you don't pay by this date, you'll be received a door hanger. So, they both receive that.
And do we know what day the property owner received that? The date is June thirteenth, but do we know what date he actually received it?
Uh, we don't know what the day it was in their hands, but it was sent to them on June thirteenth.
And that was by US mail?
Yes.
Sent by US mail. And the reason I brought it up is it seems like kind of a short notice for an out, an out-of-state, you know, property owner in a situation like that, I wonder if we want to look at, I'm not, you know, using that as an excuse for this person in this case, but it's just in the future, I'm thinking that it would seem to me that since we have so many out-of-state, you know, owners, that we give maybe a little bit more time than nine days, and that's nine days from the time we send it, not from nine days from the time they receive it. Somebody's on vacation, gets home, and, you know, there's, there's their mail, and so, so I would think we'd want to give a little bit more time.
And George, to your point, we have had some internal discussions about making sure that the owner gets notified every time the tenant does, and I don't know, we'll be mixed up on this, but possibly requiring either the property owner to be the one that receives the bill and pays the bill, and then settles it with the, the individual, or the, you can have your tenant take care of that, but in doing so, you're, you sign off as saying, I will be responsible as the owner. But, there is, I think that there's a presumption that when we let somebody know whoever's the person on the bill, they'll pay it, and so we don't automatically send it to the owner initially, and we're rethinking that.
Yeah. I thought that was the excuse that the owner used, is that he, this was the first he'd heard of it.
Yeah. It goes back to June first.
Yeah.
Is when we first notified somebody that it was...
But not the owner.
Yeah, that was, there, there might have been, and I'd not felt, looked at this as far as when the follow-up was. Well, Mr. Frederickson, he received some on June thirteenth, so, but we're, we're looking at that, George, and, and also, I'm on a listserv with all the managers, and just all of a sudden, this popped up, and this... up and is very active right now, this particular subject.
And is there a precedent on this? I don't think we have passed anything, since I've been in the council, that has been, come through with a recommendation against, you know, passing it. So, you know, I feel the same way I felt in the past on these things. If this were me as an individual and this happened, I probably would, you know, let the person go. But because we are a city and we are now dealing with the entire community, we could create a, you know, a bit of a bottleneck for our committees and our staff if we didn't let things like this go through.
Well, there's several options. I'd be happy to staff to put some options together for you guys to consider in a future meeting if you'd like us to do that. Like you say, like the boss has been tossing that around most of the months, finance of us about how often this comes up. So I'd be happy to put some things together for you guys to consider.
I would be curious, you know, I've done several of these appeals on water things and the hanger concept, $50, a first. I've never heard of that before. And I'm probably something we've done all along, it just has never gotten this far. So, and in the past, the ones that usually get to us as an appeal are a heck of a lot more than the amount involved in this one. That's not really that important. It is important to the people paying it. So I don't know what their situation is, but.
Who is ultimately responsible? The person that signed up for the water service is the tenant. Did the tenant get the notice overdue? Did the tenant get the notice that there'd be a door hanger and it could be shut off? To me, this recovery of $50 between the landlord and tenant, not between the city and the landlord. Is that clarification?
Well, whatever we do for the future, we'll talk about that. Currently, on this case specific, we need a motion or a direction.
I just have one quick question, if you don't mind, Sam.
No.
Karen, how is the procedure if somebody comes to the city and wants to open up a water bill in their name? Do you have to have the property owner's permission?
If you're not the property owner.
Okay. So the property owner gave permission and states in his letter that he knew he was ultimately responsible?
All right, that's decreed, that's on file.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I move we deny the appeal as recommended by the committee.
For the second?
Second? Any further last dissection? Okay, Jennifer, motion to deny.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel President Beniput?
Yes.
Counselor Vetter?
Aye.
Counselor Olbibi?
Yes.
Mayor Settle?
Yes. Okay. Motion was to deny, so they're, and that passed. Next item. Okay, consideration Cannon Beach Chamber of Commerce DMO contract. Bruce, do you want to introduce what we're doing?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to do for the benefit of the audience is just kind of walk through some of the highlights of the contract so people understand what we're talking about. First thing is the term. The chamber has the DMO, which is the Designated Marketing Organization. Have been asking for a multi-year contract so they could get better deals and their, beyond knowing what's going to happen as of June 30th, to be able to go up past that point. So this, we tried some ways to go ahead and make a rolling three and that, but the fact is, we just went ahead and said, "It's going to be a continuing contract." Now, the control there is that, I think it's section 20, is that the city can cancel any time after 90 days. So, you know, we do, that's our ability to go ahead and control the situation. So, but in the meantime, if everything is going well, the chamber can go ahead and try to do their best by, you know, dealing with multi-year contracts. So, that's the term. The next part of it is, it will be retroactive to July 1st because they have been performing the service, the contract was over as of June 30th or July 1st. So they've been performing the duties and so it'll be retroactive because they have been making expenses and things through that time. The part that's going to be discussed, I believe, tonight is the basis of payment. The council had given direction that the amount of money that would be given to the county, the chamber, is $300,000 per year, $75,000 per quarter. The question is, what happens the second year? And so there's going to be multiple options here. One is a, using CPI, Western states plus 2%. And then there's two others that either Jim or Greg will be talking about that are alternatives to that. So we'll dug into more detail on that. The scope is that they promote, as we know, some controls that we've put in. There's an annual work plan or an annual report. And in that, the chamber comes, not at a budget meeting, but at a separate meeting where they talk about what they plan on doing for the next year, how the money's going to be spent, what the specific programs are. And that way, the council has a chance to, you know, go ahead and talk about that and get ready for the budget. Also, it's an opportunity for the chamber or the city to make modifications to the contract. So we have that time in there that, yes, now's the time that we're talking about it and so we can, you know, we can go ahead and take a look at that. Then there's two, there's actually three more points of kind of required communication. Actually, six. The next is that at the, within 10 days at the end of a quarter, they issue a quarterly report which talks about how much they spent, what they did, what they feel the impacts were, those kinds of things, and they meet with the manager and they do that presentation. And then at the next possible meeting, which will probably be a workshop, they sit in front of the, have a council or a discussion with the council about just the things that I just talked about. That will happen three times a year. So that will give us, we've had an issue in the past where we haven't known what's going on, we didn't necessarily know what the plans were. So that gives the public and the council the opportunity to go ahead and have those discussions. And then there's a bunch of boilerplate. We added something, we split out, there was a, there was termination and then it talked about dispute resolution and those kinds of things. We both felt that it's probably important that you talk about disputes and things like that before you go into the termination side. So we added a complaint resolution, or essentially continued it on, but we made it its own category. And that's that if there is a complaint, the city receives, we provide it to the chamber executive director, who's Jim, and he reports his findings within 10 days to the city. The next is a dispute resolution. And this is a new section and it's just prior to the termination section. And I'll read it to you. "If a dispute arises in the regarding the terms of this contract, the city manager and executive director of the chamber shall make a concerted effort to resolve the dispute. If they are unsuccessful, the executive director and/or the chamber board will meet with the city council to resolve the issue." And then ultimately, because it is our, we are contracting for the service, we are paying for the service, that the determination of the city council will be final. Termination is 90 days by either party. I did say that we would have multi-year contracts, or that it was possible for them to have multi-year contracts. If they have a contract, say with Travel Oregon, that, you know, like for another year, and there is a termination, we are obligated to continue that contract going into it. So that it's, that allows them to be able to say, regardless of what happens, our decision to join with you will be continued. And then there's insurance requirements, et cetera. So going back to the, I don't know if there's any questions from the council on that? I think I've been sending you updates on this as they go. Okay, then, the discussion tonight, continuing discussion will be about the basis of payment and that has to do with what happens after year one. And again, I'll talk about option A, and that's that we use it on CPI. We tried to find something specific to Portland. That's been changed to Western states. So what we're looking at is probably CPIU Western states. That's as localized as we can get. And then because of the discussion we had about some costs that the chamber gets involved with, with promotions, that I'd agreed that it can be the CPIU Western states plus 2% because their costs may go up higher than what the, you know, average family cost or something. Now, that was, that's listed as A. And then, Jim, I'll let you and Greg talk about option B and option C.
Bruce, before we get into that, can I talk about one of the issues, another part of the lease?
Yes.
Considering all the meetings that we have and our work session agendas are so full, I question whether or not it'd be necessary to have these type of meetings every quarter. I would think that twice a year would be sufficient. And then certainly the council at any time could call for a session, call for a meeting when it seemed necessary. But to go through all this every quarter, it seems to be, I don't know, cluttering up the agendas for everything else that's going on. Where the chamber will be reporting or whoever, you know, gets the money will be making reports. So if there's a reason to call one, you know, in between the six months, it would seem to me that that would make more sense.
Yeah, and I understand because that was an issue that there was a lot of meetings coming in. The quarterly part of it, I think, was a reaction to a lack of communication in the past and trying to go ahead and set that pattern and to make sure that the council was able to hear what was going on, you know, based on what they, you know, approved during the budget time and get multiple opportunities to talk. You can add to that, you can take away from that, but that wasn't a consideration, George. But we can also not make it a long presentation. It can be more of a, this is what happened, you folks ask questions and then it can be done. So there's a lot of ways to approach it, but I understand your point. So it's however, whatever the commission's comfortable with, if the chamber agrees, is, you know, where we need to be tonight.
I would hate to see too also that too many meetings would kind of, I don't know, maybe put the council in more of a position to want to micromanage than what would really be healthy overall for the city.
Yes. And something I didn't mention is that because it's not in here, there is not, to avoid micromanagement and because you're hiring a group of professionals to go ahead and provide you a service, you, what they bring to you is advisement. There's not a veto provision in here that if they come in and say, "Well, we want to go ahead and advertise here," that's just what their plan is. And, you know, you can talk about it, try to find out what the benefits are, ask them the next time, did it work out like you thought? But it's not a situation where the council can, as you said, micromanage. Because to me, if the council is doing the DMO work, then they should be able to make the decisions and operate under your, you know, advising consent or whatever you want to call that. But I was concerned about micromanaging. So that's not in there.
The way I see the quarterly reports is really a status report. This is what we're doing, this is what we've done since the last status report. Not a time to challenge and discuss. So maybe the quarterly report could be called a quarterly status report. Maybe that helps.
Actually, yeah, yeah. But, and again, it's to have that conversation, it's for them to say, "Well, you know, the price of gas seems to be starting to impact." You know, to let us know what might be happening because it is the city's money and the city's revenues that we're talking about. And it's just, it's an opportunity for them to let you know what they see happening, is it a better quarter than last year? But again, all these things can be done in a written report if you like that too.
Okay. Jim?
Great. So in the negotiations, we agreed to the, specifically the presentations to the council because there was not that interaction in the past. And Bruce and I thought that that was important. How that, I agree with George that that will probably change in the future, but I think it's important moving forward that we have that. So that we have the opportunity to tell you everything that's happening with the program and we're all kind of on the same page of where we're going. So as to the three different options that are proposed to you for the annual increase, I'll start with the CPI. When I was looking into the CPI and what that would be, CPI fluctuates and can be a negative number depending on the year. And I also looked into what goes into the CPI increase, just to have an idea of how that's calculated because I didn't know that much about it and I wanted to find out. When I went through all the different items that they use, they basically take a shopping cart and price it across the country and that generates the CPI. But it doesn't include travel, vacation, any tourism promotion in their calculations. So I didn't feel like it was really a fair assessment that correlated with the promotion program, the transient lodging room tax, or the industry that we're trying to help promote. So that's why we looked at different options. And the standard option that's used across DMOs is the 70% of the 1%, which we had been using in the past and was reformulated by the city because you wanted to manage the costs and all the different things that you want to do with those funds. That's the best practice option for DMOs, Travel Oregon, all the different regions across the state that do that. And most cities use that as their basis for their DMO program. That being off the table, we looked at how to address that increase based on the annual transient lodging room tax. So that goes up each year based on a good year or bad year. And every time we looked at that, the number still kind of came towards that 70% which we knew that the city didn't feel comfortable moving forward with. So what other local tax number that can we use to identify that? And I came up with the base increase solely on the transient lodging room tax increase in the city's budget because that's specific to Cannon Beach. It's a conservative number that the city decides upon in their annual budget process. So your city budget increases on that amount. This year it's 6%. The Tourism and Arts Commission funds increase on that amount. So I felt like that was a fair, equal growth number for the promotion program to grow. So it's kind of the same across the board for the city, in my view. Then the question of is if we have really great years and it's a booming for the city and everybody, should the promotion program see some benefit for doing good work and having successful years? So that became option C is to have a success incentive in there so that if there's a particularly good year, then the program will see a benefit from that. This was a little more difficult to calculate because if we go off of the transient lodging room tax increase, then that's a specific number. But we've already increased on the base amount, so we shouldn't increase doubly on that. So how to calculate that? So the way I figured to calculate that was to take the actual increase of the transient lodging number, subtract the base amount that the city provided, which would give us a number. And then the example I used, 10% and 6%, so that would give us a 4% bonus. And to calculate that against only the excess money over the budgeted amount, so we're not looking at that, and that's only a, an incentive that applies to a single year. This sounds very confusing to explain and I'm sure you guys have questions about it. But, so only on good years and only on the excess funding do we get a small incentive to the program. And when looking at that, we were asked if we could create a reserve of our own for this program. And with the funding being cut, we're managing to continue that. So I would recommend to our board to use that incentive, success incentive, to create a reserve for the program itself. So our recommendation would be option B for a base amount based So our recommendation would be option B for a base amount based on the city's transient lodging room tax budgeted increase. And then to have that small incentive as well for each year that's successful. If there's not a successful year, then there's no success incentive to the program. Any questions? Fire away.
I'm seeing option B, but with an incentive, which is option C. I'm not, I'm not all on you. Option B is just a percentage equal to the same percentage that the city uses. What you described with this percent of a percent, that's option C. And then you said you recommend option B, but the words you used sounded like it's option C.
He wants B and C.
You want B and C?
Well, if you see the example I used for option C, you'll see that that success incentive is actually a very small number. Using the 10% and the six, overall transient lodging room tax number and the 6% base number, that would leave a 4%. 4% to the success incentive. Given this current year's budget, that would be... The 10% increase of transient lodging room tax would be $38,500. That would be above the budgeted amount, so that would be in excess, a good year. Using the 4% multiplied by the 38.5 would leave a success incentive of $1,540. That's money that, it's not a huge number, but it's an incentive and, and it would go towards a reserve. Certainly you could, you could choose B, but we wanted to have the option of sharing in the success with the city in, in our endeavors, was the thought behind option C.
So you're requesting B and C?
That was our recommendation, yes.
My sense, from what you're explaining, is option A, option B, and C is actually an addendum to either one of those.
Yes, it could be.
Option C.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, and Bruce and I have talked about this several times. And this might be more for Bruce than Jim, but it's just occurred to me that, and I'm using option A as the example, kind of because $300,000 a year with a potential increase, either in option A of being the CPIU, or in option B being whatever it is at that time, what happens in a downturn? If we have a 2008 again, and we don't get a $300,000 year TRT revenue?
Yeah, and I think, and Jim and I had this conversation, because if it was purely incentive-based and you had a bad year, then it would be a negative. But because our, our ability to operate rides with their success, then I would say, if you're gonna have, if we have a down year, we're gonna want to give you more money to go ahead and counter that. And so, you know, the idea of a drop at that point really doesn't coincide with the same way as if it was going up. Because, again, we want, we want their success. So that's, that's the way I understand it. Jim, do you have another thought on that?
Yeah. In, in the talks about this and the creation of the reserve fund on the city's part, and that if there's a downturn, then that reserve is there to help bounce back from that. I think if we see a significant downturn, as you suggest, then that's where we're gonna have talks between our marketing agents and the program and talk to you guys about how to handle that and what our recommendations are. And that's when we'd be looking to tap into that reserve to make corrections if needed. We, we hope that we never have to see that, but we also understand that it can happen. And we just want to try and get how the program's going to stay equal moving forward into the future.
And I understand why Jim is talking about, you know, allowing it to build and then using the funds to create a reserve, because we're both trying to create a reserve. But the fact is, I think, that at least in my opinion, that particular model, that if it goes down, then what we send them goes down, that's not to our benefit. So I think we would have to handle that differently. I think, I think that in fact, even if it was written that way, we would handle it differently, because it's, it doesn't make sense for us to reduce our advertising and marketing in a down market. And again, I'm not trying to talk against what Jim's talking about, but it is different on the downside.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, except for one instance, which would be a worst-case scenario, where it's more than a down market, it's a full-on depression kind of killer kind of thing, where we're gonna be desperate for just being able to give Karen some money to...
We have a 90-day out.
So that's my only concern, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it is. But what that brings also up to me is the difference between the CPIU and option B. Because the CPIU then is a weirdly flexible thing that goes up and down. In that same concept of keeping the 300 plus something, the B option kind of fits better, in that it's a number that can be calculated fairly easily and fairly straightly. I don't know if I'd go... I guess to me, I'm almost kind of thinking of an option A-plus, where it's not the CPIU, it's just a flat 5% forever from now on, kind of thing. Just make it a heck of a lot easier to calculate.
Trouble with all these formulas is that they have the potential to get completely out of kilter, be way off from what is realistic at the time, which means we'd be coming back to the table and making adjustments. I mean, jointly, both, you know, we come to the table with this. I guess my preference, quite frankly, is to operate on the same basis that the city operates with all of its departments. The department heads get together, decide what they really need, what they would like to have, and they must have and nice to have, and sit down with the city manager, and knowing, having a forecast of revenues and other needs, like interest payments and need to build reserves, says, well, you can only get this much. If it turns out that the revenues are much higher, you carry that over in the funds to next year. If it turns out to be much less, you start shifting money around, trying to find where are you gonna get it? Because we, we underestimated the expense or, or our revenues. And then to go to a, and so that's the way the rest of us have to operate. And then to go to the chamber and say, but you guys are special. You have your requirements, and we're gonna just give you a flat or a scalable increase without necessarily being tied to reality. Just seems to be asking for problems that you're gonna have to come back, they're gonna be calling you back to say, this is not working. Don't understand why you can't start with a, you have a base amount, you have the comfort of knowing you have at a minimum that base amount. You're making quarterly reports and an annual report, and you've put your budget together, and you come to the city who's working and putting its budget together and say, this is what we project in the way of revenues? We follow a lot, your recommendations on what the tax revenues are gonna be. And you, you're the guys who can have a better handle on that than we do. And we say, well, I guess a little lower, a little high, but we work on that together. Why we can't, at that same time, you look at what your program costs are. Some aspect of it has gone way up, things beyond your control. Or you've dropped programs that no longer are effective for you. You come to us and say, to the budget committee, well, this is what we need, here's why. You make your case, just like Karen does when she comes with her budget. She didn't have a built-in escalator. I'm just really troubled with having a built-in escalation when we are really trying to get what we can work together, especially with the annual and quarterly reports, and where we all have the same objective, is to be successful. But to formulate it and hope that that works when there's already acknowledgement, well, CPI didn't work, we'll add 2%. What's the basis for that? Do you want to base it on what we project revenues being? There's a potential for the city to game you, to kind of force that number.
Absolutely, we, and I considered that, but I...
We don't want to do that. So why can't we just say, here's your, your base amount? And it may be that we say, after a year, you say, you know, here's our base cost. These are our fixed costs, and they've gone up. We'll adjust the base amount by the actual real fixed cost increase, rather than a artificial formula. Basically, I would go with A, but I would much prefer not having any adjustment in the base rate, that we can't forecast it this way.
Jim?
Well, that's the real question, is how to forecast that number, and that's why we've had different options. The promotion program, if you look at different cities, they spend a vast amount. Seaside spends over a million, Tillamook County spends over a million. They design their program based on their funding, and we have been no different in this. So the, the funding that you guys provide for us for this program, then we will make the program fit within that funding. That's why we can work with a $300,000 budget. It's a vastly smaller promotion program than anybody in our area. And it's important for us to promote Cannon Beach, so that we're promoting what our Cannon Beach is, and not letting other people decide what that is. Trying to, to rework that based off of costs becomes more difficult to, we have to justify all those costs, and if they go up, then what different factors do we use to base those costs on? So it's, it's a much more difficult reporting. You see those reports of the costs that we do do in our reporting. And we certainly plan to work together with the city, and that's why we included the reporting, so that we could all work together to, to promote Cannon Beach to the best of our ability and to have this program be successful into the future. Without proper increase annually to that program, which is fair, we're not asking for anything above and beyond or to grow wildly. We just want it to be fair throughout, so that we can plan what that budget will be, and so we can save money on our marketing efforts and make that money spread wider, and we can do more things because we have that option. Without knowing what the increase will be and trying to project that off of costs, then the costs are driving it, not what the program should be. It's, every model that, of the DMO runs off of a figure, and then they work the marketing program from that figure.
George?
I would like to remind everyone that we are not spending money, we are investing money. At this point, over 70% of our general fund is coming from the lodging tax. It's no more important, you know, investment that we can possibly make than ensuring that that lodging tax will stay the same and go up. That's our future, that's our lifeline. Of all the lodging tax that is collected in this community, 83% goes into the general fund. 17% goes, for those 70% of 2%, that creates 17% of all the lodging that's collected. So 83% of every dollar collected goes to the general fund, which is our police department, our parks, our roads. You know, everything that makes this town tick comes from, 83% of that money is, that we're putting into our general fund. To me, there's, you know, I, I'm a business person, I've been involved in business my whole life, I have contracts. If you want to, you know, get the results you want in a contract, you build in incentives. You know, you give people, you know, rewards for success. Their success is our success. You know, this, again, you know, they're, to me, we should not limit them. If they are successful to the extent, which they have been for the last, what, two years, three years?
Two and a half years.
You know, around 10% increase that we've been seeing. Would we have seen those without this investment? We don't know, but we know we did see them, we know what we did do. You know, I feel that it's prudent for the city to reward this program and increase this program by the percentage of increase that we see in our overall lodging tax. If we see a 1% increase in lodging tax for the year, then we should increase the amount that we're spending on the investment to bring people here by 1%. If it's 10%, we should increase it by 10%. It's a simple math, it's a direct reward. It's not costing the city a penny in reality, because it's money we maybe wouldn't have had otherwise, that we are now rewarding and, and putting back into the program to, to continue to have these type of increases.
Well, we're putting 30% back in to the, to cover the operation of the city with the...
That's part of the 83%. Yeah, we, 83% of every dollar collected in lodging goes into our general fund.
Okay, so our, our goal tonight is to basically give Jim and Bruce a single basis of payment.
And could I, could I add just a little bit? Before you make that decision? The chamber board has agreed, given these three options, to accept what your decision is tonight. So we want this contract to move forward and to get going. We're already three months behind, as, as has been previously stated. And so I want you to be aware that, that they've agreed to your decision. We're, we're gonna work with whichever one you choose.
Okay. The only, the only caveat to that is Mike has kind of introduced something new that they probably haven't heard about, so...
I have a question.
Nancy, please.
Just to get, asking a stupid question, but, oh, well. The 2%, the 2%, CPA, say if the, okay, so we, $300,000. CPIU would be, say, 4%. I mean, say, just give...
It's not been that high for a long time, but it's generally around 2.
Around 2%, okay, so that would be $6,000, right? So, and then you say plus 2%, plus 2% of what? Plus 2% of the...
300.
300,000?
It'd be $12,000 on a 4% increase.
Okay, so it'd be not 2% of the $306,000, so it'd be 3, 2% of the $300,000 before the CPI is added.
Yeah, and I see where you're going, but like, if, to me, there's just one number. It's whatever the sum of the CPIU plus 2%, that equals a number, and then that's what we apply against the, the $300,000. However, what, what does happen, and you're bringing this up, is suppose that year makes it 312. Then, and as I understand it, Jim, the way we were talking about it, is that the next year is based, suppose the same, same numbers. It's 4% of 312, so there is a certain compounding effect on it.
Okay, so, so it'd be, the CPI would be, say, 2%. So it'd be 300,000 plus the CPI, be 306,000. And the 2% would be 2% of 300,000.
Right, see, I'm just saying, the 2% plus the 2%, and then we're working with 4%.
So you're not adding the 2% of the CPI and the...
Right. And I'd like to echo something that, that George had said. We want these folks to be wildly successful. I think, you know, I clearly got the message that we wanted to somehow control the costs based on how fast they've been increasing in the past. But it is to our benefit, and this is not, you know, in these negotiations, I think a lot of times there's an implicit adversarial relationship. But there, as George said, I mean, their success is our success. So we want to be careful not to put them in a position that they can't be successful, because that only hurts us. You know, the other side of it, for my negotiation side, was that I thought that you had a sense that you wanted to control that because of the amount of the increases that have happened in the past. But I don't see this as an adversarial relationship, and our revenue does come from their success. So that's important, I mean, to me, that's critical during the discussions. I mean, to me, that's critical during the discussions.
And our reserve, the apartment, we can keep out of the promotion for tourism-related facilities, we build that one. That will also grow at these same percentages. Is that what you're saying?
We actually don't have-
That'll just float, that's whatever is left over.
Yeah, but we don't really, I mean, I might have missed something along the way, but I don't recall that we actually have a, at this point, a fund for tourism-related facilities. I think that we have talked about the possibility that if additional funding from the TRT was available, that it could be used for a project like that. But as you recall, like, right now, at least in the past year, 100% of the, 70% of the, whatever percent, went to the chambers, so we had not been able to build up a reserve. We had a reserve for facilities, but I think it was more reflected on the City Hall, but recognized that if we spent that on City Hall, we would have nothing to get ourselves through a bad spell, so we repurposed that reserve for just a general fund reserve. So any funds that would become available, either if we were to modify the budget, modify the budget for the TAC, get additional funds either from our action or from somebody else's, then those could be applied to that, the tourism-related facilities. But I don't think that even with the reduction that we're talking about, that there would be enough to really make a difference based on current collections, unless we made a drastic change in the 2, 70%.
Unless we got money from the county.
Right. No, if there's additional money, that changes everything, but I guess my point is, unless we really squeeze either the TAC or the DMO, we're not going to see enough to make a difference to be able to do a tourism-related facility. If we get the funds from the county, then that would make a huge difference. Or if those funds don't come along, if we were to do another 1% or whatever on our own, that could potentially create those funds. But I think at this point, the amount that we're collecting, again, assuming we keep TAC the same, is that in one way or another, there will be either a little bit more spent on the promotion or a little bit more put aside for a reserve for promotion. And then how- Does that make sense? Mike?
Well, I'm just thinking, very successfully, if this base 300,000 will grow with some perceived by either one of these proposals, to the extent that the revenues, the tax collections exceeded the forecast, and yet these incentives are based on that, you're going to have, there's going to be a balance left. And they're talking about using that balance, building a reserve. We're talking about building a reserve.
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out where that amount in excess of the 300,000 plus whatever adjustments come out this year, where is that money going to go?
Okay. And this, the way I look at it, and thankfully the finance director isn't here because she never likes the way I look at it, is that we're talking about $300,000 that is going to be put into promotions. Right? Let me see, I think that we projected $386,000 this year in collections. So if you have $300,000 that we're putting into the DMO, and then we said that we were going to use, before we were paying for the visitor's center totally out of general fund, we said we want to pay half of the visitor's center out of these funds. So that would be about $80,000. So the amount that we're talking about over and above this year, if we're exactly right on that projection, is like $6,000. So what I'm saying is there's not, even if you go up 10%, then it's, I don't know, $6,600 or something like that. Until some other funds come in, I think the only thing we are able to do is either, and I'm not sure if it makes sense to have, you have a reserve and we have a reserve. I think there should just be a reserve. And then, that's, to me, how I look at it.
Mike, from our, the way I read this, anything over the budgeted amount would then be decided on you what, I know you haven't decided how to handle that yet, but that would go to your, the reserve for the program or to the facilities. So you guys haven't decided that yet, but I think you will at some point, but that's anything above-
It won't be a huge amount, but for the starting point, right?
Well, it depends on how successful a year there is.
More successful, a bigger percentage will go to that undefined reserve contract.
Walk me through how the visitors' information center is funded. That's completely separate from this, right?
It is completely separate. We will, we're trying to bring you the contract for the visitor information center to the November 7 meeting, I think it is, and in the past, that has been funded 100% from general fund. This year, and again, whatever number we end up with for the operation of the visitor's center, 50% will come from the general fund, and then 50% will come from what used to go, all of the money would go to the chambers, the DMO. We're pulling aside half of whatever cost for the visitor's center, and that's why we have to go down to 300,000 in order to have it funded 50/50.
Okay. So, okay, so how much are we giving the chamber for the visitor's center from the general fund? 80,000?
I'm not sure. We're looking at budget figures now. We've asked for information, but we will have a number for what it costs to operate the visitor's center, and then whatever number that is, we anticipate 50% will come from the general fund, and then 50% will come from the, you know, tentative 80,000 that we've allocated.
From the-
From-
From the TRT?
From the TRT.
Okay.
Now, just to, you know, to make up a number example, if it turned out to be 140,000, then that would mean 70,000 would come from the general fund, so $10,000 would be put into the fund balance. And then for the 70, the 80,000 that was set aside, assuming a 160 budget, which we want to take a look at, if it went down to 70, then that's another 10. I mean, we would pay the 70 out of that, and then that 10 could go into the reserve or be used for other purposes.
I'm totally lost. Okay.
If I, no, my job is done.
Basically, you're doing, basically, you're doing half, you know, over-
It's half and half.
Doing half general fund and half TRT.
Yes, it is. But we also have, just, we want to take a look at where the costs are to run it, and so we will have that number then. And then it'll be half and half.
But it's TRT that they get on top of the 300,000, right?
No. No. They used to get the whole thing. Only now we're saying out of the 386, you'll get 300 for promotions. We're keeping the balance. So, you know, we're totally in control of that. So whatever amount the number is, we'll use that TRT fund to fund that portion of it, and then the other half will come out of the general fund.
So we're kind of, we're kind of betting that we're going to get enough beyond the 300,000 to be able to fund half of that through the TRT? So we're betting that we're going to get more than-
Yeah, the projection, we did an optimistic, I think it was a realistic projection. I'm saying optimistic, I think it was conservative, that the funds would go to 386 this year. We expect if it's, things go normally, it'll be more than that. We said we need to be conservative from there. So that should cover us with a $6,000 balance. If it goes much higher, then the 6,000 will increase by ever how much it is over the 386.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm, using these examples, say the county tax goes into effect, how would that affect the, say, option B?
Okay. That, assuming if those funds come in, it would have no effect whatsoever. Those funds would be separate. They would be collected by the county and then returned to the cities in which the funds were generated.
Okay.
That's what they're saying. Not exactly the way it's written.
Okay. Thank you.
And at that, at that point, we would then have to decide how we were going to use that 70%.
Right. And if those funds came in, that's when I think we would have the opportunity to do something with the, to fund a visitor's center, or not a visitor's center, a conference facility, that kind of thing. If there are other uses, maybe public art or something like that, we're going to be talking about that later, then that would put us in a position to have some fun. You know, in addition, there are things in our budget that are eligible to be funded from the TRT that we do not fund from TRT. And the example is the, is H-RAD. So, I mean, we have things that we could offset general fund expenditures because, I mean, if there's anything that's a signature item for this, this city, it's Haystack Rock. And we spend a significant amount of money, I wouldn't say necessarily promoting it, but protecting it and making it a very positive experience for people to come here.
Well, on the topic of what else we could spend it on, Ashley, a question of you, can we spend it on a shuttle?
That question has come up many different times with the different cities that I work with, and the details in that matter. Where is the shuttle going? What is it serving? You know, the basic question, is it serving Cannon Beach residents or is it serving people that come from 50 miles away? So unfortunately, the answer to your question is maybe.
She's a great attorney. She's a lawyer.
Well, I move that we combine options B and C and make this a simple math situation to where the DMO receives whatever, they get an increase by whatever the increase actually happens for that year, for the next year.
I have a second on that one. I'm uncomfortable with C. We haven't talked about C at all, essentially. We've been talking about 300 and A and B. C hasn't really come up in the discussion.
A is the only one that's straightforward, understandable. That is, just start with your amount and you have a, an index that you increase it by. The CPI may vary, but the 2% added to that gives some certainty that it will grow.
Well, B is pretty straightforward, too. I mean, it's a number generated by the income of the TRT.
Well, by an estimate of what that is.
But in, to clarify, that's the city's budgeted increase. So you guys are actually deciding that number in the budget process.
Right. It's already a number we have and it's one we use for everything. That's, I'm just saying, it's also easy, advocating for one or the other. So with that, I guess we're looking for another option.
So point of order, did the motion that was pending, is it withdrawn? Are we moving on from that one?
There was no second.
There's no second.
So, somebody chimes up with a second.
Well, I'd, feeling that, I would make a motion that we dropped option A for inclusion in the agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion on option A. George?
It's, to me, it's, it doesn't really relate to anything that's relative, I think, in what we're doing. It's kind of a, you know, it's been averaging about 2%. It's measured by the cost of bread. It's measured by things unrelated to what we are involved in, in promoting our town. So I just think it's a, it's an arbitrary figure that, you know, you know, option B is so much more realistic and we're making the decision, you know, we are looking at that as a council and as a budget committee as to what do we anticipate? And we're going to base that on our past experience, mostly on the prior year, but even on the prior years before that. So it seems to me to be so much more of a realistic and down-to-earth measurement of what's really happening. So I would be opposed to passing option A.
I would argue just the opposite. You have the actual previous year's revenue, and you have a known percentage. You can argue whether the percentage is good or not. You can make adjustments in that by the additional amount that you might add, but it can't be gamed like the others. You know, option B, we just forecast no increase, forecast a decrease. You can, I mean, it's just a forecast, not based on, you don't have to base your forecast on anything other than getting the final result you want, where option A actually looks at last year's actuals. Option B and option C do not do that.
I feel that our, I as a counselor and the rest of the counselors and the budget committee is going to carefully look at, you know, and make realistic projections. You know, it's our budget. It's important that we budget accurately. So I think we'll come very close. You know, we have in the years past. It's been conservative. We have outpaced the, that figure, I think, you know, almost every year, but it has been an increase, I think, six to seven or eight percent that we've budgeted increases, and we've achieved those. I think there's one quarter in the last five years, and we have not achieved those numbers. So I think it's very realistic.
So this would argue in favor of no built-in escalation, but look at a realistic budget each year and say, the base is the base. It's going to, we project we're going to need more based on their programs, based on our own information and forecast of what the revenues are going to be. And we handle it like any other department would handle their budget without this built-in escalator. I think this built-in escalator is what we're spending all this time, trying to figure it out, what if it goes down, what if it goes up? Why don't we just use last year's actuals and make our best effort forecast like we do and always have done? And as you point out, it's always been quite good. And we have input from the chamber as to what they see in their cost escalations, just like Public Works makes their forecast.
There's no forecasting in option A.
Well, option-
We're leaving that totally up to some arbitrary number that we're letting the state, you know, come up with.
Hang on, hang on. There's one thing interesting about option A is it's a guaranteed 2%.
Right.
Whereas both the CPIU and option B could literally go below. It's a negative number.
Exactly. And that's where incentive comes in. That's where, you know, you don't guarantee somebody a pat in the back if they did a bad job.
Yeah, that didn't make any sense to me, but I'm just saying, as far as the fact that the 2% is a number that we applied, which means it's our decision to change it if we were wanted to in the future. So the 2%, whereas if we commit ourselves to the B option, we've got a number that could be very flexible or could be very, depending on what the market's doing. So if we have a really bad winter or something like that, that could change that. So, I don't know, I'm kind of leaning towards A, though I was leaning towards B. We have a motion, so everybody remember that.
It seems to me that if-
We have a second.
Wait a second. It seems to me if the, if the chamber wants to know, wants to have a certain projection for the next year, wants something to count on in terms of funding, A would be the priority because you know you're going to have at least 2% and then whatever the CPI is, but at least you'll have a plus 2%. It could be in, and I've seen this in many city councils, you have a bad year, B, you're going to go down, your percentage will go down. So at least you have, you know you're going to have a plus 2% in your budget on, in bad years.
Okay. Last chance for some more discussion, then I'm going to call for the vote. Okay. Jennifer? We have, wait, just saying, we have a motion to go with option A. Thank you.
Council President Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Better?
Yes.
Councilor Olbety?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudt?
Yes. Okay. You got direction, George, or Bruce?
Let me just kind of summarize it. We're talking about everything in the contract being as written with the exception of basis of payment, which is section three, and in that location, we will put option A for that. And then where it is currently in your draft, B and C will be taken out. That's the direction?
Direction, direction.
Okay. And then the mayor's authorized to sign? Yes, but based on this. So we'll make those changes and we'll get it to you.
Okay. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you. We look forward to-
We look forward to working with you in the promotion program.
Jim, thank you and the board for being willing to work with us on that.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, consideration of revised city manager evaluation forms.
Okay. Um, so this one is, uh, should be pretty quick and easy. So in September, we met and we, um, discussed the, how the city had priorly handled in the past, the city managers', managers' evaluation. We made some changes. I hoped that I captured all your changes and I put together a revised timeline to go over that briefly. Tonight, um, we're going to look at the evaluation form and criteria and take a vote on whether the mayor and the city council are going to approve it. Uh, once we've done that, I'll talk to the city manager about what type of session he wants, executive session or public session. Once we have the evaluation form approved, the new process we discussed is that everybody would come to the meeting in November in executive session and meet with me with, having considered the evaluation form that we're going to adopt tonight, but without putting together a written product. You can go ahead and take notes. You can put together your thoughts. Please do so ahead of the meeting. However, individual consulars are not required to submit any written documentation prior to or at that meeting. At that meeting, the mayor or designee is going to record the collective opinions of the city council and put together a summary document. At our meeting in December, on December 4th, the mayor, the city council, city attorney and, uh, city manager are going to meet in executive session and review that collective evaluation with Bruce. So we're removing any sort of numeric, you know, on a basis of one to five, how do you rate him in each category and moving towards, um, a more comprehensive evaluation. And, um, instead of having individual scores, we're having a collective summary of how Bruce is doing. So we're going to discuss that with Bruce in executive session, come out of executive session, um, pass a motion to, um, to finalize the evaluation, and then anytime after that, if there's going to be any discussion about salary increases pursuant to Bruce's contract, we would do that in open session. So I put together the timeline and redid the evaluation form to reflect what I just discussed. Something to note, when I was redoing the evaluation criteria, I did, um, tease out each one of the criterion, um, factors such as human resource management, and then I left you a, left you a space under there and just left it as comments. Again, it's a way for you guys to gather your thoughts. You're not necessarily being asked to submit a written product.
Okay. I would like to revisit that. Um, you know, having been in the council for five years now and going through a few of these, um, I just, I'm not real comfortable with the idea that individual consulars aren't going to sit down on their own without being influenced by, you know, somebody else and come up with their own, uh, evaluation and turn that in prior to being affected by somebody else's opinion. Um, I just, I, I think that the group dynamics of, of people in general is to want to be accepted. Uh, and if you have an idea that you, um, you know, in a group situation, a group dynamics that, that is different from the others, you may not want to voice that, but whereas you might turn it in if you sat down on your own to create that evaluation. So I don't think we're going to have as objective of, um, results if we get away from the method we've been using in the past.
Um, George, what, what about the, the part that Ashley said about, you know, being able to bring your notes to the, to the meeting ahead of time?
Well, the thing is, you have to express those notes now. They're not part of what we gather together as individuals and, and look at and then discuss. Because then if somebody has, you know, an aberrant opinion, um, they can be convinced, you know, with, with other people, but at least they, they, they will defend their ideas from, you know, from the get-go and they wouldn't be squelched, I guess, potentially squelched, somebody who is more timid, somebody who isn't likely to speak their piece as readily as someone else.
Somebody like you and me.
Somebody unlike you and me, Mike.
And here I am, stuck in the middle.
Well, I can make a suggestion that, that may help, and I believe we discussed that last time. Another way to handle it is to have a due date a week before our council meeting. Everybody submits, again, it would be a written document with your comments under each one of these categories. The mayor or his designee would put those comments together. So when you meet, you're looking at everybody's comments, if that makes sense.
That, that has similar, um, it, it, it's kind of solves George's problem, but it also has a similar problem is that some people can write better, um, in an argument. So the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards is try this, uh, and what, what I would hope to do is when we do the meeting is to state your positions, not argue your positions. So it, you know, you're, and so I think we're comfortable enough together. Again, I don't know how future councils will work it, but in this case, those of us who are on the board, who will be on the board, on the council, um, and make it so that it's a comfortable situation where we're not arguing things, we're just stating them. So if I state that I don't like the way Bruce always wears blue shirts, you kind of like that.
I noticed that, too.
Which is, you know, it's a statement and it's not an argument that we need to get him red shirts, whatever. So I'm willing to try this. Would you be willing to try it? And then we can modify it again.
Well, I won't be around the next time.
Well, that's true.
So, I mean, why? We're just...
I'm not, but, but somebody else will be. And I, I think the, the dynamics, the, the group dynamics is the same, you know, on and on, no matter who's sitting at the table, there's always group dynamics and, and some people are more likely to voice their opinion than others, uh, and more likely to say something that's contrary to what maybe everybody else is thinking. Um, and then you don't hear it. It gets, it gets buried. It gets, um, doesn't happen.
I think that's inevitable with any process, because I felt, to me, the old process was very, um, difficult because it's all based on averages and you can crank, you know, the numbers one way or the other. And I never felt that they were a good, uh, sign of what we were doing, especially when we added in the fact that some people were just not answering some of the questions. I didn't in that case, and so that skewed the numbers.
Right. Well, there were certainly some questions that, um, you know, if you had no experience, there was no reason to answer the question, so.
Yeah, it was kind of a challenge, so. Let's give this a try. That's my feel.
I, I feel the same way. I felt that the old system had, um, as many problems with it equal to what you're bringing up, George, and that I, I really think it's time to, to try something different.
Okay.
I actually tend to agree with George.
I made a compelling argument for once.
Um, I, I think, I think, I like the idea of having the written form instead of the, you know, checking, uh, a number by a, in a box. And I do like the idea of being able to kind of sit down and think, well, how do I feel about whether he wears blue shirts or red shirts? And, and, and write a comment about that a week or so before we all meet together so that we can debate the shirt problem. Um, either that or write our own comments and give them in a, in a complete form to the city manager so that he knows which one of us is saying what. And I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I kind of agree that, that we can get swayed by other people's comments and might not possibly be as honest about how we feel, um, if we're all discussing something at the same time without having prior, um, ability to make our own comments.
Okay. This is really cool. Mike is to be the tiebreaker.
Uh-oh. Well, I have no trouble expressing my opinion.
While he has a shirt on?
But I'm wearing a blue shirt, too, so. Uh, I guess I, I, putting it down in writing probably helps you formulate your own thoughts. I think there's value in that, which I would probably do anyway, whether I was submitting it or not. I think it's a good way to, to think about this. But to feel intimidated, I don't know if that's a word, but what's wrong with being swayed if somebody pointed out things you hadn't even noticed or hadn't realized? Um, to get some kind of consensus rather than, than the city manager, geez, you guys are all over the map. You know, you're not, I'm pleasing some of you and not others in this category, but there's a different group there. I'd really have a more unified response back to the city manager, uh, rather than all of our individual comments. So, I guess I'm willing to give this a try, uh, the way it is. Maybe it's our responsibility to make sure that, uh, all the counselors do get heard during that discussion period, so it puts a little more pressure on, on, uh, the chair, I guess Sam, or me, whoever's doing that, to say, George, you're pretty quiet over there. What, what's wrong?
Yeah, I'm not concerned at all about whether somebody would be heard. I'm concerned about what we would hear from them, um, i- if the situation was, you know, as we're proposing or if it were, as we had it before, uh, because then they show up with it, uh, it's in their, you know, it's in their ratings, and then they can certainly be swayed. I, I agree that, you know, we should all be able to be swayed because there's all information that, we, we don't all have all the information at all the time. So we're always able to learn from what somebody else's experiences is. Um, so that's, that's where I'm coming from on it, you know? Sam, it's up to you, I guess.
First. I think when we had this joint discussion on this, I'd said that the immediate comments that any of you provide me or, uh, you just stop in or want to meet with me and, you know, talk about anything, that to me is the best evaluation in the way that I would respond, um, probably the, the best overall. Um, to George's point, assuming that most people can agree on a shirt color, if anybody, if it's you or anybody else that doesn't necessarily agree with that, I would welcome the conversation either in, um, you know, the executive session, if that's where we end up, like if everybody says, well, blue is okay, but you were to say, but I just want you to know I really didn't like the blue, um, that's, that's okay because I want to know that. So I think that, um, if the intent is to, uh, you know, like if it's yours or if it's Nancy's, if you have a differing opinion or if there's a particular subject that you want, uh, you know, improved upon, I want to hear about that anyway, even if everybody else says, hey, you're doing pretty good with it. I want to know what the person that's not, now, doesn't think that, you know, why and what can I do to do better? So I think that, um, any one of you, anytime, should feel free to come in and say, you know, you got the worst taste in shirts ever, but my wife picks out the shirt.
Okay. We kind of have a, not a consensus, but we still need a motion on this because it is a formal...
And how would a, a motion be vocalized?
I would just ask that you, um, have a motion to approve the timeline and revised evaluation form.
I move we approve the timeline and the revised evaluation form. Thank you, Ashley.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Last chance for discussion. Jennifer?
Councilor Better?
Yes.
Councilor Olbety?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council, Council President Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Stoudt?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Last item, consideration of a letter of support for the beach bill, public art project. Bruce?
Um, yes, sir. Actually, um, Robin Rizley was approached by the, by Kevin Kozlowski at the Oregon Environmental Council, and, um, they were looking to do, uh, some public art in recognition of the beach bill. Um, and so we kind of took that up. There is a public art group that has, in the past, has reported the manager. We discussed that, you know, as a group. And then, uh, the way that, what has happened is they've done one for the bottle bill, they've done another one for the land use bill, but they want, they approached us and said, because of the beach, the importance of the beach bill and the fact that it was settled as a result of a case on Cannon Beach, that we think it would be appropriate that we do the, the beach bill in your community. So they, um, they actually came with money, which is always nice. So they've, they've approached us and said they would like to do something. Um, what they need to get started is a letter of support. And, uh, what they have agreed to is they would, um, seek the grants to try to develop a budget. Uh, the city is able to either work with a university, um, in order to, uh, maybe do a competition among students for that public art or for the city to select an artist and, you know, that person to propose. It's, it's wide open on how we want to handle it. So, uh, again, to get this started, what we, um, what they've asked for is a letter of support. I think the Jen has put a draft, or the draft letter of support in front of you, and, uh, if you agree to that, make a motion to send that, then, um, we will start moving forward with that.
Good. Is there any discussion on the sort of budget for the project? What might be raised?
Yeah, we're looking at the possibility of like $30,000 because they are going to go to corporate sponsors. Um, there may be some local sponsors, you know, here that want to do something. Um, I think that, uh, the OEC has a, uh, relationship with Travel Oregon on some of these kind of things. So, um, we thought that it could be, you know, as much as that, uh, depending on how much, you know, people wanted, local people wanted to get behind it also. But, um, again, the letter means he's going to start going out and trying to get, to get funds. It is important that we try to establish a budget relatively early because that's going to obviously set the scale of the project. And they have had projects where actually they ended up with more money than what they had planned. Um, so they want to try as, as much as possible to get that right. So they want to do the, the, uh, fundraising early on. And then we would be looking probably at some sort of, uh, you know, trying to, to work this out probably in late spring or something. But we've had some ideas about trying to make it so that, like, for example, if there's a competition, that essentially the city throws an event and, uh, you know, people could come, locals, because it's going to be that time of year, uh, maybe talk to the two or three people that are, uh, finalists and spend time, the, you can spend time with, uh, with their friends, uh, provide their input on, you know, what they would like to see and, you know, kind of make it fun like that, but make it more of a locals' decision than having something during season where, you know, anybody can, you know, that's never going to look at it again is going to make the decision. So there's a lot of things that we can do. We're not committed to that, but we think it would be, you know, fun just to do it. So we, I'm excited about it.
What is the location that has been chosen?
The, the tentative location is in the Gower Street area, and the reason is that's where the, the hotel where the, the case was settled. Um, we have some challenges there because we have to keep it open for vehicle traffic. Um, there's times when the, you know, Pacific Ocean kind of comes out to Pacific Avenue. Um, so...
In there.
Yeah. So, yeah, and remember, you were taking pictures when I was watching you, yes, and I'm going like, is he going to get out of the way? Um, but, yeah, but we're looking to do something down that way, uh, you know, just because that, that was the site. So it'll be in that area, George, is what we're trying to do.
Okay. Well, the letter says our public arts group, we're supportive of local leadership, has selected a site. So I wonder what that site, uh...
Well, no, actually, this was a, uh, plagiarized is the wrong word, research is what I was looking for. Um, I probably didn't catch the fact that the sample letter they sent that I didn't change it, so that's my fault.
So we have not actually selected a site. That was, that was...
As far as selecting a site, we're, we're pretty set on Gower for the reason that I just talked about, but it could be, it could be anywhere.
Yeah. That was one of my, you know, first thoughts was, well, the placement of it is very critical.
Yeah.
And the, and the city should certainly be, you know, making that decision, I guess.
Right.
As opposed, because we have talked a lot about... As opposed, because we have talked a lot about improving that whole Gower Street entry there, and this obviously would be a major focus of that improvement.
I'm hoping we get enough money for somebody creative to go ahead and improve that.
Put it in arch?
No, the sign. The sign with all the do's and don'ts and everything else that's on it, it's just, it's such an obnoxious entrance into the, an amazing place. So I would like to get that improved also. But I don't want that to be the main thing.
Okay.
Welcome to the beach, you can't do this, you can't do this.
So I need a motion to sign this thing, because I really want to sign it.
I think the sentence needs to be altered then, that says our public group has already selected a site. So we need to say something which is accurate.
Probably appropriate motion would be as amended, and we'll make that change.
We're going to make that change.
Yes. And I apologize, it wasn't better.
I move that we authorize a letter of support to the Oregon Environmental Council to locate public art at Cannon Beach to commemorate the beach bill.
Second?
Do we need to say something about as amended this?
As amended.
I'll still second that.
Okay.
Okay, George.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Counselor Herbert Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Better?
Aye.
Counselor Olbey?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stedel?
Yes. Okay. That finishes our scheduled meeting. Informational and other discussion items, clearly, one came up at the comments, was about rabbits. And also, the city council, most of us, went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference. If any of the councilors wish to make, let the people know what we did when we were down there, you're welcome to do that.
I ate a rabbit.
Yeah, you did, I saw that.
And I saw him do it.
That's true. We went out to dinner one night, and they had rabbits, so, there you go.
So is that your solution?
It's a solution.
I've just had a couple brief discussions with Bruce about ways and where we can start heading. I had one interesting encounter with some folks at the conference. Surprisingly, that was one of the things, sorry, that was one of the things that was, when they see my tag, I'm from Cannon Beach, what are you doing with the rabbits? Okay, so they know about it in Eugene. There was one gentleman who, in his city, was able to use their nuisance laws for the folks who were feeding them. And I believe, I haven't done any research yet, and I think we will do some looking into our own comments in the books about feeding seagulls, and feeding rats, and feeding raccoons, this is comparable. So at least in that sense, we'll have a little, something we can, I don't know whether, how much action we can make in that or not. The other comment that the gentleman told me was that they have, they're in a more rural area, and they do have chickens, and actually larger animals within their community. We do allow chickens. We have had quite a discussion on that sometime, some years ago. That was very entertaining. But it could be a model that we could say, if somebody wants to keep rabbits, they get hutches, and they do it properly. Otherwise, these are wild critters that need to be in an infestation situation, eradicated, however we can figure that out. I think the winter is going to do most of our work, but they might come back next summer, and so we need to have some sort of solution by then. So, anybody else have any comments or ideas? Please bring them to the city, so that we can, we're doing as much research as we can right now.
Well, I live in Tallavanna amongst the rabbits. For some reason, they don't like my yard, it's probably because I'm not a very good gardener. But I don't see many people feeding rabbits. I don't think that the feeding of the rabbits is what is proliferating them. I think there's plenty of natural food for them. I see them out in the yards all the time, just chomping on grass. There's plenty of that around, plenty of green for them to eat. So I don't think that any type of controlling people feeding them is going to really affect the numbers. I think that the number's going to be controlled in another way.
Yeah. I vaguely remember that one of our natural partners in this, the bobcats, have diminished in a long time ago. So that would have been the proper response.
We could introduce them.
The coyotes on the north end.
And the coyotes are, I have, in my area, there was a small family starting over on They quickly disappeared, because I have a lot of dogs in my area. So whether they were, I had never heard of anybody's dog catching one, but the rabbits just learned that was not the safest place to be. That's the only thing I can do anecdotal.
Do you folks have a dog?
No, but I like a big one. Actually, one of our neighbor's dogs was in its yard, chased after some rabbits. I don't think it caught any, but the tourist at Tallavanna called the police. The police came to this owner who had lived here forever, and was told that their dog was in violation and he needed to be on a leash, and he couldn't be chased by rabbits. If they saw him out there, again, they would hit him. So, are we touring, are we with the tourist and the zoo? Are we going for the homeowners who's supposed to pay taxes in our backyard? Guards disperse. And I have a picture here of a person who throws out five to ten pounds of carrots every day, feeds them in her yard, throws them in the neighbor's yard, feeds them in their yard. So there is feeding, but they are still multiplying with natural. They ate a couple hundred dollars in my flowers this year, so I even tried to spice them up with a bit of cayenne pepper, fox urine, that's what, it's still hanging.
Well, the best I can say is that we're trying to come up with some sort of solution, and it's taking some research. Colleen's doing a lot of research for us. We'll get there. Obviously, we're a city, we don't move fast, so.
Well, certainly, there's nothing to stop anybody from hiring a pest control service in, on their own property.
Correct.
They're well within their rights to do so, and I would encourage both yourselves and your neighbors to do just that.
Part of the problem is, since I was on the news, there's already some public chaming going on on Facebook about this, and there's a lot of talk, and a lot of people who's there, yes, all over Facebook, we're going. We came down this last weekend, and we found entrails on our deck, or up on our patio, not on the deck, but on the concrete deck. Nothing else, no fur, nothing else of the route. Were they put there because we did actually have a hawk or something come in and eat everything, or was it retaliation or bringing this issue up? That's speculation.
At least, we got rid of one rabbit anyway, right?
Huh? That was one of them.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I have some information that can kind of show what our limitations are going to be in this. And that's that we've contacted multiple state agencies, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and what we found is that nobody is in charge of bunnies. They, if these were brush rabbits, then Fish and Wildlife or somebody would be involved. The problem that we're going to run into, and this is going to sound very morbid, but your, the options are to kill them, or to trap them and kill them. Because they're not allowed to be relocated. It's not, I mean, I came from Florida, and people learned that putting pythons in the Everglades is not, you know, a non, uneventful act. So the idea is if we were allowed with the rabbits and say, well, we'll just take them and put them out in the forest or something like that, they're going to have diseases, they're going to compete for food, all those kind of things. So unless somebody wants to trap them and take them to the Humane Society, or something along those lines, anything that we did, or anybody that traps, they are not allowed to be relocated, nor would it make sense to relocate them because of the potential danger to the, you know, the native animals. So it's a very limited list of options, is what we're finding. So, I mean, we will continue to look at that, but it has, if anything is going to work, it's going to be trapping, and then finding somebody that will take them live. But short of that, I, you know, I gave what the options, what the outcomes are likely to be.
See how the chamber deals with Cannon Beach, the bunny-killing capital of the world.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I know, and I've already been, was asked to be interviewed on Oregon Public Broadcasting, and that didn't, I did not do the interview, but.
Is it legal for a tourist to take one home?
Oh, that's, that's your new gimmick.
We can make that part of our DMO, we can promote free bunnies in Cannon Beach, pick your own.
George, your business experience is coming through, your entrepreneurial spirit. What we probably ought to be doing is trapping them and then selling them at the farmer's market for people to take home.
Now we're getting innovative, this, keep going.
Any legal way to kill them? Because as far as I can tell, you can't use a slingshot, you can't use a gun. I mean, there's, I'm not aware of a legal way to kill rabbits on your property.
If you touch it, you tell it, is that cruelty to an animal?
I don't want to do something that's going to be illegal and going to be charged for because a rattly neighbor reports it.
You'll never get on the Supreme Court.
Jason, do you know of anything?
You can't discharge a firearm in the city limits, but, I mean.
Can I drive over it? Can I strangle it?
Could you get a hammer?
You've really been thinking about this. That's more concerning, that you have a list that you just pulled out, that you could do to it. My, I mean, I guess pointing out the obvious is that, yeah, you may kill thirty, there's another three hundred that are going to pop up in your yard the next day. I mean, they're procreating.
Well, no, I mean, it would, it would do some good if I could, if I could confidently kill rabbits on my lawn, because they eventually get there.
There's no law that I'm aware of that you can, that you can't kill a rabbit that's on your property. Obviously, you can't do certain things to it, what you choose to do to it is up to you. You know, putting out poisons, that type of thing, to kill it as you would other animals in your yards, people get for raccoons, or anything like that, but, yeah, we don't discharge anything in the city limits, including a slingshot, that type of thing.
And I do have one thing to add, that when we were talking to these people, they kind of said, natural selection is what's going to go ahead and solve this. Interestingly enough, brush rabbits are also having a bumper year. They don't know why there's so many of those all of a sudden. I think we're experiencing the same thing with the domestic variety. But when winter comes, you know, rains wash them out, and if the coyotes, or the bobcats, or whatever, you know, there's enough of a concentration, they'll figure that out. But that is what normally happens, because the, their experience has not been that the population gets so great that it overwhelms the human population, there's going to be ups and downs with it. So that was what they told us the likely outcome is going to be over time.
When I lived on the northern, by the RV ranch, there was a bunch of them. But close enough to the woods, coyotes came out of them.
Yeah.
The problem with Tallavanna, we're far enough away from it, they're not coming in there. We have a few hawks that sit on the road and get a few, but they're not keeping them.
Yeah.
We have some neighbors that cut holes under fencing so they can live under the decks, they're not going away.
I'm not saying they're going away, but I think that there's, there'll be an ebb and flow in the population as we understand it. It does.
A few years, and we'll see what you say about that, and it's not happening.
Okay, I understood. Okay, well.
I am curious, of the city councilors who went to the League of Oregon Cities meeting, was there anything learned about affordable housing?
I did. Would you like to know about it?
Did you have a day? It was a full-day seminar.
It was a full-day seminar. I'd be happy to speak specifics with you, but for an overview, nutshell this. There are lots of things that are going to be coming out with the upcoming housing study that's being done county-wide, and it's incumbent upon cities to enact. Basically, they were suggesting zone changes, allowing greater density, ADUs. Oddly enough, just like that zone change, or ordinance change that we voted down, was an example of something that they recommended for cities.
You say they, you're talking about the presenters?
The presenters, exactly.
And their presentation was basically to all of Oregon, not to the coast, or any particular?
It's a statewide problem, it's a nationwide problem.
I didn't go to any of the, I went to one housing, partial, partial one, that I caught in, it was slightly different. But what I got from just talking to folks in the, in the, in the conference itself, everybody was concerned. Everybody was talking about housing and homeless, were the topic of the day of the weekend. And the only thing that I, the fact that Cannon Beach has such a unique challenge, and the fact that our property values are calculated because of the ocean, they're higher, our geography is different, that, every time I, the table that I was at, we were talking about it, I couldn't get into the argument, because we were just that much more unique. So, that's all, on that specific topic. As far as the conference itself, I had many very interesting discussions with a lot of folks. Nothing struck me from any one of the conference sessions that was, oh, man, that's an idea that we have to do. Nothing really hit me this time. That's happened at other conferences. But I did get a lot of fun, general stuff. There was a couple of good seminars on how to interact and get citizen involvement, which Bruce and I have been talking about for some future town hall-type things, and just for the budget process in general. I did meet with the Governor's Office for Solutions. They have something now that they call the Kitchen Table, kind of an interesting group. If you're curious, they come and just help you work out things in a citizen interaction kind of phase. The Ford Foundation had a really interesting presentation on community engagement. I sat with Senator Merkley's representatives, he was not there, but his folks were there. Basically gave him a big thumbs up, but we had a nice conversation. I went to the medium cities networking thing, again, same situation, Cannon Beach didn't quite fit. I went to the medium-sized, usually we go to the small cities, because we're like small city, but four or five times out of the year, we're bigger than most of the medium cities. So I went to that one, just to hear what they were doing. Didn't quite fit. There was a absolutely fascinating keynote speaker. Guy was Jordan, what's his name? He does do web things. Guy was great. Nothing fit for Cannon Beach. What he was doing was guerrilla tactic, community activity, literally creating a whole neighborhood within downtrodden parts of Detroit, or Cincinnati, or something like that. And he would just go do it overnight, and just ignore all the rules and all the regulations.
Literally overnight?
Literally. And they found out that duct tape worked better for striping roads than paint, and they could just do it like crazy. Bringing in trees and park benches, and they would derelict buildings, they would paint on the windows what should be there. So it'd be like a flower shop painted on the windows, and then they'd have people out front, and they would build a neighborhood, and people would show up and enjoy the whole weekend. It's crazy. Again, we don't have that kind of place in town. There was one little idea that I had, and will, might come up later. There was one little idea that I had, and we'll, might come up later. I had a massive discussion or a presentation on the Oregon Property Tax System. Holy crap, no wonder we're in trouble. I can't even get into it. It is so complicated and it's, it's just crazy. And hopefully, the legislature will start doing something. That's one of the League of Oregon Cities' primary focuses this year, or this coming legislature. Went to a local disasters conference. I always try to go to those. Bruce was there with me on that one. Kind of a good one-on-one. I felt like maybe the last ten minutes were worth it. But a lot of people get in it. Every once in a while, there's new people, and that's, that's kind of intriguing. There was, during the homeless sessions, there was a fascinating gentleman, a police officer from Lebanon, had a, an amazing, I have to tell Jason how to do this. It was, it was an amazing presentation, and the guy literally took two chairs, and he sat in front of us, kind of a burly guy, but he played both the inquisitor, the policeman asking the questions, and the victim who was in trouble for being homeless. And guy was amazing. I wish he did...
Of course he was, he was a police officer.
He was a homeless person?
He was a homeless guy. I was invited as, being Cannon Beach, we're always kind of recognized, and so they invited me to come to the Climate Change Cities Meeting. There's some cities in, in the state that are doing some pretty good activities. Luckily, I had our stuff, so I could kind of keep up with them, because we've done some pretty amazing stuff ourselves. So, I'll let you know if they're, they go anywhere else after that. They're just starting. What they want to do is more climate change sessions at these conferences. Lastly, after the League of Oregon Cities, I went to a tiny homes presentation at the fairgrounds, just because that was fun, and maybe I learned a little bit more about tiny homes. Anybody else?
I was surprised at how many people attended the housing seminar. I wish they'd had a lot larger room, because we were all kind of squeezed in there. But obviously, there's a lot of interest in affordable housing and different types. I have a booklet here from ODOT on various housing choices, and it has a, a lot of examples that are being done throughout the state on how housing is being planned, affordable housing is being planned. So, it was, it was really a better conference than I thought it was going to be, a better seminar than I thought it was going to be. It gave some ideas. A lot of the things we're already doing, though. The construction excise tax, we've talked about changing some of our zoning, we've talked about height, increasing the height of buildings and so forth. And so, a lot of the things that we have already considered were discussed there, so I'm not sure that they presented a lot more options for us to work on, but it was very interesting. I, I hope they continue to present those seminars, because hopefully, we will be able to find some idea to work on.
Yeah, I just echo a lot of what was said here, but I was amazed somewhat at the number of housing issue seminars that were homelessness and, and housing, affordable housing. Every, almost every segment, you know, two in the morning, two and a, three in the afternoon, but almost every one of them had at least a session on affordable housing or homelessness. Most of the homelessness came on Saturday, and that's all they talked about, that, well, in the small houses. I also felt like this is a little bit better conference than the last three that I've been to. But like Sam, you, you look at the program, you think, okay, boy, I'm excited to go see that, and you get there and find it, we don't have it so bad. You almost walk away thinking, boy, are we lucky here in Cannon Beach compared to the problems that other towns, large and small, have. And it's been very difficult to find something that is, you could say, boy, I can take that back, I'm excited, bring it up at a work session, we're going to do something with this. Everything, I, I hate the word that we're unique, but maybe we truly are. One of the conference, or sessions I went to was how to reach your community in the digital age, the importance of social media. And I went because I don't know anything about social media. I have email. Does that count? I'm not sure. But it was interesting, the headlines in the, in the paper that day was Facebook just lost fifty million files of personal information to hackers. Whoa. I don't, I don't know if social media is the way to go. But it was interesting, they said, that's what everybody's using. If you want to communicate with your citizens, you're just going to have to do it that way on FaceTime or all the, not FaceTime, but Facebook. And I do use FaceTime. So, it was kind of an eye-opener. And I, I talked to Rusty, our IT guy, and he's, he's not a big fan of it himself. I know Karen uses some in Public Works, the Police Department does some. Hrap probably more active in that, but there's not, to my knowledge, a city of Cannon Beach, Facebook. Is there one? Well, okay, no, I take it, I did find that, and they said it's really inactive. Okay? So, is that what you, your Public Works?
Alicia and Clannick and myself are administrators on the page.
Okay, I knew that there was one from Public Works, but I didn't know there was this separate...
It's a City Cannon Beach page.
Okay. Stand corrected, so, good. Other thing that the others hadn't done, I went on a tour. Title of it was Economic Development Through Public Art. And it was an afternoon-long tour in the city of Springfield, which most of you probably knows, a near suburb of Eugene. And the focus there was to go look at some public art, but mostly talk about funding for it and the positive impact that it had, particularly in more depressed areas. Now, again, you don't necessarily have that, that need for economic development, but it certainly talked about how it created a community center. It created, it became an attraction of the city, like the Simpson mural in Springfield. It was done by the animator, cartoonist at Twentieth Century Fox, and I'm not a Simpson fan, but it was pretty impressive. There are other sculptures, monuments to...
Ken Kesey?
Yeah, on Ken Kesey. A two-story mural that was just, I mean, you just looked and all, and thought, how did they do that? And people, even over there, buses were stopping to let people look at it. So, there, there is more than just the visual aspect of public art. It creates public spaces, and they were really touting how it could really improve different neighborhoods in the city of Springfield. Talked about how you get it done. Well, one way they got it done is they, the city council says, this is what we want, and they have a, a commission of staff of the city, and they're given the assignment, go out and find an artist, and here's your budget. If you can get more, great. And so, it's, it's a, literally a department function in the city, and it doesn't seem to involve a lot of the arts community. For different pieces of work, they do pull groups together that have expertise or a particular interest or focus on it, but their idea of getting it done is just get it done. And city council says, yep, that's what we want, and they go do it, and they budget for it. Little different than, I think, we, we do a lot of things. So, it encourages me to be that there's more to the public art than just presentation of the video. There are some real community efforts to... One of the other sessions I went to was City Manager Evaluation Process, which I thought, I thought, I got to go to this. And it was presented by a mayor and a city manager, a city manager like Oswego, the mayor, can't recall where she was from. They relied a lot on, on a number of management text, textbooks, on the benefits and the way that, for managing, or evaluating your personnel, your managers. In a nutshell, they said, don't review, preview. You've hired experts, they have their expertise, you vetted them, they have their experience. What you need to do is evaluate, is give them goals during the preview, written goals, part of your planning, annual planning, but the review should just be, how did you do? You didn't do too well on this, let's address that. And it was not, they said, get rid of the numbers, get rid of the, you know, nobody, everybody grades differently. We would say, well, Cs are average, that's good. You know, he's average, give him a C. Most people that reach the level, many of us have, a C is like a slap in the face. A middle grade, two and a half out of five, eh, you know, they don't like me, I'm leaving. So, I, I thought it was an interesting approach, and frankly, one that I used in most of my career. So, I guess that's why I liked it. But it says, talk to your people, evaluate on how they're doing, what they're doing, give them guidelines, give them goals, and then support them where they need support, encourage them where they need encouragement, but don't beat them over the head for how they did last year. I thought it was interesting. I don't know, it's probably, everybody else has covered the other things very well.
Do you have any other highlights you wanted to mention?
Uh, no.
Okay, Bruce, did you have any highlights?
Well, pretty much did a lot of the same things that you did. Also, I attended one about council relations and relations with citizens, and there was a lot of war stories about what they call frequent flyers. And I, you know, as I was listening to the stories, I'm thinking, well, you know, we have our usual suspects, but, you know, we don't have the, you know, folks coming up and, you know, ranting for, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, and, you know, the council just totally ignores them in hopes they get tired, and we don't have that situation. So, I was, I was proud of the city for that and proud of everybody that participates.
A lot of the mayors that I talked to have time clocks, or, you know, they're very adamant about the time that you're allowed to speak. We're lucky, we don't have to do that yet.
I want to go ahead and second and third that. Go to a lot of council meetings, it's very pleasant here.
I just looked up, for anybody who's interested and would be curious, it's an arts activist named Jason Roberts. It is, it is a fascinating process that he's gone through, and that was, everybody was talking about his presentation, plus the fact that he made it through cancer while he was doing all this. If that's everything?
I have a couple of questions. When we're doing the, when we get our summary, and we have the building values listed for the month, can we add the, how much in construction excise tax we have accumulated?
Yeah.
Every month?
I'll just add another column to that, too.
Yeah, if you could do that, I'd sure appreciate it. And then I'm curious as to where the, where we are on the code enforcement officer, the hiring of the code enforcement officer?
Jason, have we heard back from the guild?
Yes, we're good to go, so we'll be opening up the process here probably by the end of the week.
Okay, do you have a goal as to when you want to have someone hired and on the job?
July first.
Next year?
No, this year.
Oh, this year. Okay. So, now that you've gone past that deadline, do you have another one?
No, one thing, one thing I admire about Jason, he is very goal-oriented.
Yeah, backwards.
Yes, yes. He never loses sight of his goal. Never meets it, but he never loses sight.
So, do you have any idea when you might have someone?
As soon as we can, the process, if we get it out, I'd say Monday we'll have it out to the different areas, and probably two weeks to get applications in and then do the process. So, hopefully, within the next few months, position filled.
By, at least by the end of the year, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
And then drone disturbances, ninety-nine in the Hrap report?
Drone disturbances.
Drone disturbances around Haystack Rock. Are you aware of those?
We've had the complaints, different people have called in, whether from hotels or just people on the beach that see them, and we just tell them to contact us anytime they see it. And that's been a learning curve with us and Hrap of call us when you have it out there instead of after the fact, because we really have no way of finding where it went or where it came from. And we do have signs that are posted down on the beach accesses and down closer to Haystack Rock, because I think it's two thousand feet or somewhere in there that they need to stay away from the rock and the habitat. But I've actually been in contact with Fish and Wildlife and State Parks to find a way that we can enforce it, we get more signage. And I know that Bruce and I have been talking too about figuring out more loopholes, so we've been waiting to hear back from State Parks and the other cities that are dealing with the same issue. It's not a new topic.
No.
They've been dealing with it down in Newport and Lake City, and so we're looking at the same things here. I think we're in a quiet season for it now, so it's a good time to work on it.
I don't know how you stop it, but there's someone...
Well, I read an interesting article today that drug users in different areas are using them as a, to send them outside their house to watch for where the police are coming from, or that type of thing, and counter-surveillance monitoring. And so, I can't imagine, that would have been the last thing I wanted to deal with when I was on the drug task force, is having to worry about that type of counter-surveillance, because that you can't see sometimes, and that's pretty unreal.
Do you guys have one?
We do have a drone. So, what our goal would be is just to bump it out of the way if it's going out there. No, we had one, and we haven't used it yet, it was actually donated to us, and there's certainly a lot of good uses for them. But we've worked with Matt Verley from Hamlet Fire to get visuals when we were looking at putting the tower up at the north end for the radio communications. It worked really well to get us a view of how tall the tower would be and what we'd be able to see for clear vision to other towers. But we've also used them for, in Seaside, when that gentleman was in his house shooting his gun through the walls, we were able to get up in his windows to see where he was. So, there is a use for them, but unfortunately, you can get them for so cheap now that they're all over the place, and people don't care about other people's privacy, you know, even outside hotel rooms, we're getting complaints of them flying by, and it's just...
Could you chase rabbits with it?
What's that? I think if we had enough drones, we could pick up the bunnies and carry them away.
There you go.
Jason, aren't you looking at like a really big drone? What was that called?
Helicopter.
Yeah. We've got that coming, too.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah, what was the name of it, what kind? Anyway, okay, Ashley?
Yeah, Mayor, Bruce asked me to give you guys a quick update on the legal process for the general obligation bond. So, I know it's late, and so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I think as everybody's aware, we're looking at a new city hall, and to do that, we are going to need a general obligation bond. To get a general obligation bond, we have to get approval from the voters first. We are looking at getting that approval in May 2019, which sounds like it's a long time away. Which sounds like it's a long time away, let me tell you, it's not. So we have to have the ballot title prepared, I would say, by January or February of this upcoming year. Before we even get our ballot title, we need to start getting our ducks in the row. So Bruce has been on this. One of the first things I learned when I became a city attorney is that you don't dabble in bonds. So we have hired a bond counsel who's gonna come in and work on the substance of what actually we're gonna be putting into the bond. So, her name's Courtney, she's great, and she's part of the team that we're assembling. So right now, we're looking at putting together a description of the process, getting the maximum dollar amount that we're gonna need to make that project possible. Hiring a financial expert to come in and give us our levy impact. Essentially, when you go out to increase property taxes, which is what a general obligation bond does, when you put it on the ballot, you need to be very clear that it's gonna increase property taxes and how much. So we're gonna get an expert who's gonna come in and help us with that. Once we get all that done, you're probably gonna see a couple of different resolutions coming across city council. There are gonna be definitely two of them. One is gonna be to refer that measure to the ballot. I'm gonna have a lot to say about, you know, the legal restrictions about what goes in on the ballot, but that is gonna be something that you guys approve before it goes out. You're also gonna be looking at a resolution for reimbursement of costs. That, again, is a little bit outside my expertise. We're gonna have bond counsel walk, walk you through what that resolution does and why it's necessary. So, that's a very high-level overview, because it's, it's getting a little late. But essentially, look for this process to be started. Bruce is definitely on top of it and we are moving forward. Anything you want to add?
If I can say a couple of things. The reimbursement resolution we're talking about would allow us to recover certain costs and to put it into the bond to be able to, essentially, to pay ourselves back. So, the soft costs, which include design, things like that, we can do that anyway. But we just want to make sure if anything does come up, any work that we do, we want to be able to recover the cost of, the total cost of the project. When we are looking at the, I'm sorry, the facility report, you knew that we had hired SRG and they will be here tomorrow all day. We're gonna be talking to the individual departments about, you know, about their, their space. One thing I want to ask you folks is, I think it's important that they talk to you to get your expectations, you know, aspirations or whatever, for how, what you want to see in the city hall. And, there is, there will be, I think that individually, it would be good. You can always talk to them one-on-one. But they've also agreed and said that they could come to the meeting on the 9th to kind of do a presentation and then try to get some, some feedback from you. So, if you want to meet with them before, if you want to meet individually or whatever. But, at this point, as I've explained before, we're not talking about a design or anything. We're talking about a program that says, these are the spaces that are gonna be created. This what needs to be next to what, this is how big it's gonna be. This is what needs to be in the space, although, that, that sort of thing. And then that will be translated into cost. And because of the two sites that we're looking at, where we want some very specific site foundation information, because that's one place we could really bust on the, the budget if we don't anticipate what our conditions are gonna be. So, those are the things we're working through. We are, intend to have that project done in two months, to have that report. And, that would be December 14th. We need to start like the first week of January. We'll give you copies of that report, the first week of January, to go and think, what site, you know, which site are we gonna be on? You know, does the, the report reflect what you want to have happen, whatever? Because in probably early to mid-March, we need to have the language probably earlier. I can see that now.
March, oh, way before that. So March 2nd is the hard deadline to get the resolution passed here. So, you know, depend on when your council meeting is, I don't know if March 1st, did we decide it was a Saturday?
No, March 2nd is a Saturday. March 1st is your fallback day, you know, it doesn't go to Monday, it goes to Friday. And we have to have it in by then, so we'll be having decision meetings in February.
And if it's at your regular scheduled council meeting where you vote, that's actually the first week in February.
Right.
So we can call a special meeting if we need to. But, I mean, once we get that report in, we need to move pretty quickly on getting those documents together.
Bruce, a quick question. Obviously, at Southwind, our, our infrastructure costs or at least our foundation whole thing would be much greater. And that would be potentially offset by the value of this property. Is that being figured in also? Are there, is somebody gonna be looking at the value of this property?
We are, we've not included that, as far as selling this property, turn it to whatever, to, for a sale. Right now, we are looking to, I'm sorry, the only, the only thought would be to take the building down, turn it into parking. But if we want to do a commercial sale, if the, if the council wants to consider that, again, that's something we would have to decide very quickly if we were talking about reducing the potential cost of the project by what we could get for this property.
Right.
So, there's, there's a lot of, of things in there to be able to do that. I'll also be asking you, next meeting, you'll probably forget by then, but I'll send you something. You're gonna be getting a copy of a, the plan that's been put together by the Swift, by the Southwind Group. And, I'm gonna ask some questions that are gonna be very critical in that, in that they're talking about a particular location for the city hall, a location for a school, that kind of thing. There's two questions I'm gonna ask. One is, do you want us to consider the whole site for the best location for a city hall? Or just the site that they identified for the city hall? And then the second question is, there's gonna be one cost if we put the police station in, in the city hall up there? As far as utilities and, and access from 101, that kind of thing. Or, there's gonna be another cost if we're gonna have a school up there and, you know, possibly other uses, be it commercial, low-cost housing or whatever. And, that's two very different costs. But if we were to make the decisions, well, I'm asking you. If we were to make the decision that we'll only include the cost of what it would be for the city hall and police, and we put a school and things like that up there, we're gonna have to redo the utilities. If we say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and size those utilities for all potential opportunities that might come up up there, it's gonna significantly increase the cost of putting a city hall and a police station up there initially. So, I'm gonna need to know that, because I don't want to make assumptions on any of those. But, we'll talk about it when the item comes up on the 9th.
So one other piece to mention here, just because Bruce is talking about a lot of different components that we're gonna need to decide on as a city. Once you pass that resolution referring the bond to the ballot, public employees really have to take a step back. So, if we pass it the first week in February, from that time forward, Bruce and the rest of the staff cannot be advocates for the bond measure one way or the other. So, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that. But at that point, you know, it's pretty much turned over to the elected officials who have referred it to the ballot in order to do public awareness, any sort of campaigning. Public employees, myself and Bruce included, cannot be part of that process.
They can ask information-based, they can answer information-based questions, right?
Yeah, we will definitely get into a discussion of it as we get closer. But it is, you know, what is information and what is campaigning can, can be a little bit of a difficult balance. But you're right.
Okay, and I've been involved with, again, in a different state, but multiple bond issues. And they had a similar requirement that we could not advocate. But, we went out and just explained the process, what it would cost, what the project's gonna be. And, I'm hoping that we can do that, because probably staff is gonna be in the best position to have that discussion.
And that's always, that's always part of the issue.
Right.
There is a safe harbor where you can basically send to the Secretary of State, here are promotional, here are materials, factual materials that we're putting out. You know, are these impartial, is the word you're gonna hear. And, you know, my experience has been we've got a lot of pushback. The Secretary of State is very conservative. So, we'll talk about the, we can talk about the risks of all that. Yes, we can be factual, yes, we can answer questions. Public employees should be aware of not sliding into advocacy.
One of the things, when we did the 800 acres, we were the face. We asked the questions of staff. So when we were asked a question, we asked the question of staff and then made the answer. Just to give that little cushion in between.
And I, I just bring it up...
We can't dress our employees in promotional T-shirts?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna advise against it, but, what I'll say is, I just bring it up at this point for elected officials to, to get involved in the process early on, so you can be good spokespeople for it when the time comes.
Great, thank you. Last, one last little item, and then I'm definitely closing this. Thursday night is the forum. So I'm sure everybody here is aware of it, but I had to mention it just in case.
Seven o'clock at the Coaster Theater.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Sam.